Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Hallelujah. The kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jen.
All right. Item D on the agenda is approval of minutes from March 20th, 2023, regular council. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item E is citizen communication. If there is anyone in the audience, including Webex, that would like to address council and anything that is not on the agenda, you can do so using the chat or walk up to the podium. It's the way here. All right. Moving on to item F, reports from council committees. F1, the Finance and Budget Committee met on March 27th, 2023, at 6:30 PM, and we recommended to council to approve the 2023rd first quarter budget adjustment. F1, or I'm sorry, F2, the Safety and Human Resource Committee met, did not meet on March 27th, 2023, due to lack of agenda items. And F3, the Technology Committee did not meet on April 3rd, 2023, due to lack of agenda items. Item H, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. H1 is ordinance number 012-23, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number one for the year 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Kevin?
This will be one of three that we are asking for emergencies so we can bypass the three reads. These are the quarterly budget adjustments that were, that did go in front of the Finance and Budget Committee meeting. This allows us to make sure that our line items are all adjusted. There's, if anyone has any questions about the attachments, I'll be more than happy, but we went over those in the committee, and I asked for this to pass so we can close out the month. The first one here is, is where we actually raise line items because of the three that we're going to do. So this one here, raise them for various reasons. Again, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them.
Are you looking for suspension for tonight?
Yes, suspension. Yes, please.
Does anyone have any questions regarding these?
Motion for suspension.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Marissa, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
That has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item H2, resolution number 013-23, a resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer certain fund balances, transfer number one from respective funds to other funds pursuant to ORC Section 5705.14 on an as-needed basis in fiscal year 2023, listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Kevin?
This is two of three. Again, we're going to ask for suspension of the rules, please, so we could close out the month. What this particular one is, is that we are sliding funds from the general fund into the capital improvement fund. That, we have that in our resolution when we passed the budget, but it's more in there as a placeholder. It had a $0 amount in it because there's years that we don't ever do this, but this is the 10% match for the roundabout project that'll be on the north side of town.
Great. Thank you. We need a motion for suspension.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on the resolution.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. And that has passed on first read under suspension. Item H3 is ordinance number 014-23, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make appropriation transfers, transfer of appropriation one from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency.
Motion. Second.
Kevin?
This is three of three. Again, we're going to ask for suspension of the rules so we could close out the month. This is actually the preferred method that we would like to do, if we can, for our budgets and our budget adjustments, but not always can be the case. But what this is, this moves money from one line item, or budgeted money from one line item to another. So it doesn't increase or decrease the budget per se. It just allows us to say, hey, we're not going to use the funds as much as we thought in this line item, but we are going to use it more so in this matter on another line item.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I think, I'm just curious why this was, like, it's not under suspension on the agenda. Did you not know before?
I'm going to say that this should always be under suspension. So that would've been my mistake that next quarter, because I can tell you the next quarter budget adjustments will be under suspensions too. If we don't suspend these, and you do go to three reads, which you certainly have the right to do that, we would not be able to close out the month. And the unfortunate thing is, is the timing of the matters. We would either have to have special committees or special council members so that we can get the months closed out. If not, we won't be closing out the month of March until May, which then we're going to start the process over again. We can't close out April until that is done too.
I remember this. I don't remember what we, we talked about, but, um, was it, well, it doesn't matter.
You used to go to committee, and they'd come here for first read, and then we'd, and then go second read, and then you'd pass the suspension with emergency. This speeds the process up by two weeks.
The other thing that we do too is we ask for the law director to enact this legislation prior to the meeting. If not, typically, we're, in this meeting, we're asking for it.
That's what we're doing, right, yeah.
But this moves it up two weeks by able to do that. And I appreciate the efforts that the law director does to be able to work with us to get that done. So if there's some way you want us to change this, I'll be more than happy to help you out, but, um, to me, the quicker that we can close out a month, the better off we are.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Do I have a motion for that one? Or do I miss it?
Oh, I don't think we did.
I jumped the gun. I thought we had it already. Sorry.
You're fine. I'll motion.
Second.
Okay.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. That has passed on first read under suspension. Item H4 is resolution number 015-23, a final resolution enacted by the City of Napoleon, Ohio, relating to the improvements, to the intersection at State Route 108 and westbound US 24, including construction of a roundabout and other improvements within the city of Napoleon.
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes, Council President. As you likely recall, back in February, we passed legislation to allow our cooperation with ODOT for the roundabout project. What this legislation does, or this resolution does, is appropriates our 10% funding for the project. And it requests the Director of ODOT to proceed with the project. It also allows city manager to sign the contract and execute the payment. And as you may recall, last time we met, I said that we would likely ask for suspension on this because of the deadline coming up. So I would ask for this one, and the next one is related. It has to move, has to do, they're related. The next one has to do with moving the monies to allow for our payment of the 10%. But on this one, I would request suspension as well.
And this is pretty typical of any ODOT project. And I recall, we talked about it for years, and then they give us information, say we need it.
At the very last minute, and we need it immediately.
Right.
Yeah. On the next, I'm going to be discussing that further about the 110 project as well. It's going to be the exact same way. But that, I'm not sure between now and the next meeting, I will have figured out whether or not it needs suspended. I haven't received a date on that one yet.
Okay.
Andy, since we're on the roundabout project, I think one of the things we talked about, I think you told us the last meeting? Maybe I'm meaning wrong. Right now, obviously, a lot of people just walk underneath there along the side of the road. Are they going to be able to do that during construction?
Yeah, I did receive, I was going to comment on that later too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I can do it right now, since you asked a question. I did receive feedback from ODOT two days after our last meeting, and they said that they would maintain pedestrian access through the construction project.
Okay.
So they won't even have to go down, because I had requested a path that went down through and underneath 24. They said they would remain, they would maintain pedestrian traffic through the project area when it did, when during the project it would not allow for access through one side, they would move it to the other side. So while it may not always be on that west side of, of 108, they will always maintain some pedestrian access through there.
What about the detours? They say which way the detours will be going?
Still have nothing on the detours.
Okay.
I just wanted to communicate with Transportation Network if they needed to have more runs or whatever, you know, during that time too, to help get people to where they got to go.
Right. I spoke with Councilman Hayes the other day about that. I had, I had put in a call to them several weeks ago and had not heard back, and I failed to follow up. So I will certainly follow up to see what, if anything, we can do there to get them to make more runs or get something in our billings so that people know who to contact for rides. So somehow we'll make that work.
Because there are rotary on Thursday, and we asked some questions, or Lori asked some questions, and I wasn't listening right, so.
All right. So you are requesting suspension, correct?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion, please.
Motion for suspension.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
One question before we do the actual ordinance. Since it's being suspended, does that have to be an emergency on there or not?
It's structured in a way that they've asked, so it's exactly what they, it's their format even. This is what they've asked for. So it's, the timing is exactly what they wanted. So if they wanted an emergency in there, if I recall, there is not one, then that's what they've given us.
Okay. Good question. All right. Marissa, please call the roll on the resolution.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. That has passed on first read under suspension. Okay, item H5, resolution number 016-23, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of completing this state Route 108 improvement project and to award said payment to the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, as you just read, just because this is over the $50,000 threshold, council must approve the payment, and this is to pay the 10% for the roundabout, which is $179,653. And again, to, as Kevin alluded to, this, these are estimated payments, or estimated amounts. So it could go up or down as the project comes to a conclusion.
So speaking of that, when we have our, if we're doing a project ourselves, we usually have, what is it, 10% is like the max that it can go? Do we know what the max is on an ODOT project? And I know we're only paying the 10%, but I do not. But I can find that out. Curious.
Good question. They don't award a bid if it's over 10% above what the estimate.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, we need a motion for suspension, please.
So move.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. And please call the roll on the resolution.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. That has been approved on first read under suspension. Okay, moving on to item I, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is resolution number 010-23, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of replacing the roofs of the existing buildings at the City of Napoleon wastewater treatment plant and to award said purchase to Richland Roofing and declaring an emergency.
Second.
As Council President, there are no changes to this resolution.
And no suspensions, right?
That's correct.
Perfect. All right. Have any questions or comments? Hearing none, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. That will be moving on to third read. Item I2, resolution number 011-23, a resolution approving the petition for special assessment for special energy improvement project under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 1710, approving the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Napoleon, Ohio, in cooperation with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, this is the PACE grant that the thermaduct, the business that is going to be moving into the old Walmart building on Oakwood Avenue is going to be utilizing, and there are no changes to this resolution.
Thank you. All right. Can I have most, I'm sorry, call the roll, please, for the resolution?
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Item J, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have none. Item K, good to the city. K1, discussion or action, February 2023rd, replacement pages for the codified ordinances of Napoleon. Andy, anything on that?
Yes. This is the semi-annual update that we received from Alder Drain that updates our codified ordinances. The replacement pages were included in your council packet. Pages 50 through 119 were the replacement pages, and I just ask that you request the law director to draft legislation accepting these changes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All right. Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Item K2, discussion or action, ODOT 2023 and 2024 salt contract participation. Andy?
Yeah, I just ask you to request the law director to draft legislation expressing our interest in the 2324, 2023 and 2024 salt contract with the ODOT. The amount of the, of the contract is yet to be determined, which is the way it always is, is the cart before the horse. Quite honestly, we anticipate fair prices on it this year just because it's been such a mild winter. And from all indications, as some of our staff has seen, the piles of salt out and about are rather large at the facilities. We're hoping for a good price, but right now, I'm just asking you to direct the law director to draft the necessary legislation.
Thank you.
Do we have an amount in mind of how many tons we need?
No. I discussed it a bit with Chad and Jeff both, and my feelings are, if, if it is a good price, which we expect, we'll fill the barn. We'll just get whatever we can to fill the barn. We obviously didn't use very much this year. Right? It's not over yet, right? But we will do whatever we can to fill the barn, whatever they estimate.
No comment from over here.
Did you say smoke coming?
All right. Can I have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation?
So move.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Item K3, discussion or action, review recommendations on CRA agreements from the Housing Council and Tax Incentive Review Committee.
Yeah, the Housing Council met this evening at 6:30, and they recommended approval to continue with the CRA agreements that are within the city. And there are seven agreements. American Road Holdings, which is Paul Martin &amp; Sons, Janmar Properties, which is Westview Villas on Claremont Avenue, Just Bush Investments, doing business at the Emporium at 130, Kestner Corporation on Commerce Drive, MSG Investments, which is the Trail Drive Apartments, Shank Properties, which is the CNC Fabrication on Freedom Drive, and Ventures in Space is the spec building, former spec building, which is where Jack Products is currently located. As I stated, they did review and approve continuance of all of those CRAs. And per the Ohio Revised Code, this body has 60 days to approve or move forward with those as well. I ask that you approve the Housing Council's recommendation to move forward with the agreements.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Marissa, please call the roll.
Motion.
Oh.
A motion.
I'll second.
Please call the roll to approve the recommendation.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item K4, discussion or action for ODOT requested legislation for the state Route 110 paving project.
Yeah, as we discussed earlier, this is very similar to the first legislation on the roundabout project, although this is for 110. It'll appropriate our portion of the funding, the 10% for the project. In this case, it's $188,178. It requests the Director of ODOT to proceed with the project, and it allows the city manager to sign the contract to execute the payment. I request that you ask the law director to proceed with drafting the appropriate legislation for this.
Thank you. You have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All right.[1540.28] All right. Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Hey, we'll go around the table, and start with Kevin today.
I got nothing to add. Thank you.
Molly?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Lori?
Nothing for me?
Dr. Ross?
See you.
You want to ask Ross? Sure. Hey, Ross, do you have anything? If you're talking, we can't hear you. Hold on. The way at the bottom, it looks like you're on mute on the bottom of your screen, Andy, on the very bottom, down, right, there, yes. Now, go ahead, Ross.
All right. Hey, everybody. Andy, I just had a quick question. With the news that we are partnering with the school board, or the litigation against the CCHC, has there been any citizen communication around that topic since last week?
I have heard nothing. Yes, I have received no feedback, one way or the other, on that, Ross.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. All right, Mr. Mayor.
I had breakfast with Commissioner Jeff Myers Friday, and he wants to donate an American, a flag, an Ohio state flag, a flag for the state of Ohio. Not a, you know, not a buckeye.
Buckeyes.
I'd be worried there for a second.
Not good or a damn, tell you that much. And also a county flag to be hung at Oberhaus Park, and I think we can do that. I think we'll probably put them on the wall someplace, maybe, just so they can kind of be permanent. I know there's a flag there right now in the flagpole, the American flag's there. If we can get, you know, put those on the, on the wall, it'd be kind of a neat, a neat thing that Commissioner Myers would like to do. He's like, he could do that at some point, coordinate with Tony to get those in, and get those the right way, and up the right, the right style, and all that kind of stuff, to make sure they look nice. So either put them in frames, or just hang them. Let's see how, let's see what works the best for that. I'm sure Andy will talk about it a little bit, so I can steal his thunder, but Andy and I went on a, an industrial tour on Friday. Jen Arp set up a tour. So Andy and I went to six different locations, and it's just a testament to the amount of work that gets done here in the city of Napoleon by those six organizations we took the time to visit. Really appreciate all the hospitality throughout the day. They did a great job. Jen, Jen and Kylie sent it up for us, really appreciate it. And there's a lot of common themes of, you know, we need more employees and those kinds of things. But those are really a nice, a nice way to get out and see some really important industrial, industrial partners here in the city of Napoleon. So ahead.
Thank you. Dan?
Nothing this evening.
Ken?
Appreciate the report from the Chief of the Police Department. That was, that annual report was very well done.
Thank you, sir. That's Marissa, who did all that work.
All right. Dr. Dave?
Nothing to report.
Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Andy?
A few things. Mike McGlore was, is the one with AMP that was going to present the power supply update that I had to reschedule. That is now rescheduled for Friday, April 21st, at 1:00 PM. So any of you that might be interested in that, more than, willing to have you here. I'll try and mention it again at the next meeting, or at least get you something more, so there's another reminder. He will, he will be coming back. I received an email from Josh Strickland this week. As you may recall, he was the PACE Program Coordinator, and he asked that we appoint somebody, and as he alluded to, that we are allowed a seat now on that board. So he asked that we appoint somebody to the Energy Special Improvement District Board. So I would ask council's approval, I guess, to nominate me to be on that board.
There was, I don't mean to interrupt, but there was also the possibility that you could have somebody vote proxy as well. If you want to do that, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a great recommendation. Anyone else interested at all in, in that position?
I think it's appropriate for Andy to do it, if he doesn't mind, mind doing it.
You're willing, you're, you're welcome to take it if you'd like.
All right, so do you want us to do a motion?
Motion.
Yeah, okay. All right, I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I did hear some discussion before the meeting about the Ag District public hearing being delayed, and it is delayed unfortunately until next Monday at 6:15 PM. We just couldn't meet the notification requirements in order to get it through tonight, so we had to bump it one more week. The OMEA Day at the State House is Tuesday, April 25th, and that runs from like 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There's a legislative briefing, a luncheon, and then meetings with the lawmakers. If any of you are interested, let me know, and we can make arrangements to go down there. I did not anticipate going, but with legis, with our, having Rob McCully as a member of our community, and Jim Hoops as a member of our community, I didn't feel like it was worth my money to go down there and have lunch and come back. But you're more than welcome to, if you
Good at town, I can go catch you. And I agree, if we're going to see him, it's easier to see him Sure. Up here than it is when they're in their district versus when they're in the state house.
Right. Finally, I want to recognize Greg Coleman and his electric team. They did a phenomenal job. You know, these guys go out in the middle of everything to, to do what they do, and not only did they help keep Napoleon Electric customers up and running, but they were also able to send two trucks and four members of their team down to Wapakoneta, who really got slammed hard, and assist them as part of the AMP Mutual Aid, so. I think it's fantastic that we can do that. There's no doubt in my mind that if we were ever to suffer through an event like that, that we would get the help we needed through AMP's Mutual Aid program, so. But Greg and his team did a great job. Yeah, and finally, as the mayor said, we, we did tour six different facilities, and I can't think of one of them, mayor. We went through Kestner Corporation, Automatic Feed, Custom Ag, Paul Martin &amp; Sons, Shank Properties, and
Chad?
Who?
Jack Products.
The biggest one.
They were six.
It was the last one, by that. But it was amazing to hear how they all worked together. Or most of them, just, you know, they, one of them uses the other for this, that, or the other thing. It was very impressive, and each one of those industries is well-run and well-managed, and they're all doing quite well. So I, I suspect we'll see further growth, growth in several, if not all of those businesses in the future. What?
Some have very talented welders that are, that are employed.
Here we go. All right. Forty years in the industry, and I, and I made a comment on how beautiful some of the welds were at the very first place. And they were, they were perfect welds. And I told them I was kind of a weld geek, so that stuck with me the whole day. Every place we went, "How's that? How's that weld look, Andy?"
You're a lot of like stuff.
They were.
Don't let, don't let the mayor get to it.
But it was, it was impressive. They all do very nice work and make beautiful welds.
It was a great tour. It really was.
It was. That's all I have. Thank you.
If I can diggy back real quick off your comments about the electric, you know, you read, you read the newspaper, you look around, and a lot of communities are still without power, and I know we had power outages locally. A lot of them are measured in minutes or hours, not in days, like some people. And that's a testament to our guys. Going out in bad weather and fixing emergencies, but also going out in good weather and trimming trees, and doing all that work that we do on a daily basis. So when those big storms come through, we're affected less, and that's the good, good work by them on a day-in, day-out basis. So thank you for the reminder.
And, and one thing I failed to mention is Chad is not here tonight. I told him he did not have to come. He was more than willing to come, but he's been without power since Friday night at midnight, and doesn't anticipate getting up and running until possibly Wednesday. So he's fortunate to have a generator, and he's been filling it every six or seven hours to keep it going. But he's been without power, so I said, "You stay home, take care of things there, and don't worry about coming in." And he does have his surgery on Wednesday, so.
Right. Okay. I don't have anything that hasn't already been shared, so, thank you. Move on to item L, approved payment of bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item M, can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
I'll motion.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Thank you all. Our adjournment.